Welcome one and all to the May 2nd meeting of the City of Placerville Planning Commission. If you would all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Member List.
Here.
Vice Chair Saragosa.
Here.
Chair Roby.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
It is noted that Peter Wolf Commissioner has been granted a leave of absence for his upcoming trip, in fact, I think he's on it right now, on the east coast of the United States.
The consent calendar, are there any items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar? Are we going to approve the agenda and the minutes by consensus?
Chair, I would like to have item 6.1 pulled for tonight until we have a full commission.
Does that require a vote, point of order? Does that require a vote?
Technically, under the bylaws, the bylaws do allow for the, bylaws to be, the bylaws allow the bylaws to be amended upon a majority of the quorum present. Historically though, and Member Friend can probably attest to this, is that typically, and one of the reasons why the bylaws require all five members to be here, is because typically those are really your standing orders of business, your procedures, and so having all five members there, but that's some historical background, but yes, they could be amended tonight.
No, my, actually, my question was, does the pulling of the item from the agenda require a vote? Does that cause a motion?
That sounds to me like an amendment to the agenda. If you all agree that that item be removed from the agenda, that is your prerogative, absolutely.
Well, I'll assume it's a motion, then I'll support the motion to amend the agenda to pull item 6.1 until such time as we have all five commissioners present.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6.1 is pulled. Any other items to be pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, item three, items of interest to the public, not on the agenda, this is the public's opportunity to comment on matters that are not on the agenda, that are under the purview of the commission. We, or I volunteer, ask to, members of the public to state their name if so desired, and at this point, do we have any comment from the public? Hearing none, seeing none? Item four, communications.
The, I did provide you with a letter from the Chamber of Commerce, it's our understanding that's an invitation to the farm tour, that they annually invite planning commissioners to participate, and also provided tonight is the packet for upcoming March 16th meeting, with the exception of the minutes, which of course have not been drafted for tonight's activity, so that will be coming forward to you as soon as they are prepared.
One can only hope for so much. Alright, thank you, is that all communication?
Yes, that's.
Item five, 5.1, 1864 Broadway Conditional Use Permit 17-02. Do we have a staff report?
I do. The request this evening is by Morgan Burgess of High Road Motors LLC. He's requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile brokerage business at 1864 Broadway, which is located within the highway commercial zone. Under the highway commercial zone, auto sales are a conditional use, and the commission tonight is charged under city code to act upon all applications for conditional use permits, including the application tonight, CUP 17-02. The commission may grant conditional uses when they make finding that the uses are deemed essential or desirable to the public, convenience or welfare, are in harmony with the general plan objectives, and are not detrimental to surrounding property. The project site's approximately one-half acre in area, it is west of the intersection of Broadway and Point View Roads in eastern Placerville. The site and surrounding parcels are also located within what's called the airport overlay zone, or AO zone, and that's due to the airport, Placerville Airport, and its proximity is 2,100 feet south of the project site. Parcels along Broadway that front US 50 and that are east and west of the site are zoned highway commercial, and also have the airport overlay designation. Located west, south, and east of the site are a mixture of single and multifamily residential uses, intermixed are some commercial motel uses, also the Upper Room Dining Hall, and the Seventh Day Adventist School. The project location is owned by the Northern California Conference of the Seventh Day Adventists. Mr. Burgess has rented the site for the auto brokerage use. He would work alone, he intends to use the 960 square foot office building on the site as an office for his auto brokerage use, where he would provide services for the arranging, negotiating, and assisting in the purchase of new or used vehicles. Mr. Burgess would also like to store a few vehicles at the site. He states in his application materials that no automobile repair would take place. If circumstances warrant in the future regarding vehicle security, Mr. Burgess requests the ability to completely fence and gate the site using a six-foot-high chain link style. The applicant's submittal package includes a proposed wall sign, and where it would be placed on the building, and that's provided in the applicant's submittal package. Sign area is approximately nine to 10 square feet, well within the 80 square feet maximum allowed under the sign regulations for the frontage that this building has along Broadway. The request appears consistent with the general plan, the auto brokerage use would be considered desirable for customers seeking an agent for, again, to arrange, negotiate, and assist in the purchase of new and used vehicles. Approving the use would also, excuse me, approving the use would provide for an office and professional use within a commercial district, and that's consistent with policy C7 of the general plan land use section. The request would also occupy, occupy the building and site that is currently underutilized. The request would also be consistent with the general plan's safety compatibility policies and intensity criteria of the airport land use compatibility plan by not exceeding the maximum non-residential intensity criteria of 1,000 people per acre. Therefore, the project is consistent also with the airport overlay zone. The site contains six established paved and striped parking spaces, these spaces are located behind the office building, they are accessed by a paved driveway from Broadway. City code parking requirements for an office use is one space per 200 square feet of floor area. The building has, again, 960 square feet of floor area, therefore, a minimum of five spaces would be required for the office building. The sixth space could be then be used for vehicle display. City parking regulations also require that a four-foot-in-height solid fence, wall, or hedge be permanently installed between any residential zone and a parking area serving a commercial use. Multifamily residential zoning exists south of the site, also, if you've visited the site, there is a single-family home in close proximity to the parking area. Chain link fencing, some with woven slats, exists along that demarcation between the parking area and the residential zone. Staff has added a condition that would require the applicant to provide that screening detail specified under city code, be it either a solid fence, a wall, or a hedge. Staff's evaluation of the request resulted in its determination that it falls within a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act as an infill project. Staff recommends conditional approval of this conditional use permit 17-02 after making the findings on page seven of staff's report, and subjecting the request to the conditions of approval within attachment one of staff's report. Mr. Burgess is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff by the commission at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Andrew, can we go, I was looking for the condition that you just referenced regarding the fencing, and is that 5C in attachment one? Because I believe-
That's correct, that's correct.
I thought that what you just read was a little bit more precise or referenced, referenced existing.
The requirement under the code is four feet, it specifies that it shall be either a hedged, a wall, or a solid fence.
I see, so you used the language.
Yeah, and then I did add some additional language to it that would require the applicant to perform that improvement within a specified time, and the condition reads 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we have the applicant in the audience, if you could, if you have a presentation, any information that can help us out, field any questions, dodge any barbs.
Good evening, gentlemen, appreciate you guys meeting here tonight. I am an auto broker, and the primary thing that an auto broker is known for, at least in the state of California, is that I am legally allowed to go in on your behalf to new car dealers, and do all the negotiating, and do all the haggling, and essentially sell a vehicle from a new car dealer, and that, some people are uncomfortable with that process, and so an auto broker, that's what we're most known for. In the eyes of DMV and in the eyes of the state, I am technically a car dealer, and so I often go to auctions on behalf of people looking for a specific kind of car, and because there's some specialty stuff out there, the fun part of my job is dealing with the really unusual cars, or motorcycles. We were listing a Ducati motorcycle, and the guy called me on it, but he was really after a very specific Harley-Davidson, one called a Shriners Edition. He had called me from Idaho, never met him face-to-face, found out what he wanted, located the Shriners Edition Harley in Wisconsin, arranged shipping, we got the bike from Wisconsin to Idaho, I never met the man, never saw the bike, but we did the deal. Recently sold a beautiful 1965 Ford Mustang, and it was shipped to, we shipped it to Germany. Year before that, a vintage Ford truck went to Holland, so, yeah, like a real estate broker, I'm the intermediary between a buyer and a seller. I do occasionally have my own cars to sell, I'll take something and trade, or just find a good deal, or just get tired of my own car, and I list and sell that, so, I won't be around much, I'm at auto auctions a lot, I sometimes travel, we picked up a vintage Chevy truck a couple months ago, I drove my truck and trailer up to Oregon to get it, and so, I'm often not around, but DMV requires that I have a physical address that is zoned properly, I can't do this out of my home or out of a residential situation, so because DMV considers me a dealer, I have to have a properly permitted address, and that's primarily what this is about. Benefits, when I sell a vehicle that's not at a new car dealership, but I'm selling it to a resident in Placerville, Placerville gets the sales tax from that, if I'm inside the city limits. Also, this particular building is next to the Upper Room, and the condition of the building has suffered a little bit because of some of the patrons there. I've already started to maintain a presence there, I'm there a lot of the evenings, meeting people, trying to sell off desks and other stuff that's being stored in the building, and so I'm specifically trying to be there when the customers are there, from the Upper Room, so that they can see that something's happening at the building, and already there is some improvement, I'm having to ask fewer people to leave. So, yeah, I'd like to benefit Placerville, and help clean up that property a little bit, and, yeah, hopefully this sounds like something you guys want.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant from the commission?
I do, and at the pleasure of the chair, given the relative lack of pressure to move the agenda along extremely quickly this evening, I'd actually like to have a little bit of a conversation with Mr. Burgess on this project. Is it Burgess or Burgess?
Burgess.
Burgess. So, and I think this, this is kind of a very, very exciting project at a number of levels, and I've only owned four cars in my life, I still own two, they both start, and I bought one of them through a broker, the 87 Grand National, and, and so I appreciate that passion. It's interesting, within the last week, in my travels, I noticed two things, I was along Auburn Boulevard just recently, from Bell, along Interstate, Business 8, along Business 80, from Bell to Watt Avenue, I think, and that used to be a very, very run-down, dilapidated area, starting with the Ramada Inn Hotel, I think, on the far west end, and then going all the way to Watt, and now, it is, it is pristine with auto dealerships, beautiful auto dealerships, and it looks like along the freeway side, they've, they've redone the fencing, and it's really very, very attractive, and it's Auburn Boulevard, it's kind of its own little, little thing, and I thought, wow, they've done a really, really good job with this, it's really enhanced, okay? And, and so, I'm not gonna, not putting that pressure on you, of course, but, but I see this as an opportunity in an area, I would disagree with staff's findings only, that I find it desirable, and that it could really enhance an area that really needs some improvement, that would be my finding, okay? So I would just add to yours, not contradict what you put in there, Andrew, of course, and so, so I'm looking at that. Then, a couple days later, I was at the intersection of approximately Eldorado Road and Motherlode Drive, and on the southeast corner, there's a piece of property there that isn't quite as attractive as the Auburn Boulevard, and it is a storage area of all manner of things. So, the first thing, just a couple of questions, you talk about storing vehicles, I'd like you to explain that just a little bit, the storage of vehicles, are those outside, inside the building, what are you talking about with that?
That is just so that, if I've got a car that's in inventory or in transition somehow, need a place to put it, just want to make it clear that I'll be parking a car there. If there's any concern about junkers sitting there, once I'm open for business, like you said, some of these areas with auto dealerships get cleaned up. If the building continues to look terrible, and I've got junkers sitting there, no one's gonna give my, they're not gonna give me credibility for selling a decent car, and so, I'm, I'm not interested in having junkers, and making it look cluttered, and the sooner I can clean it up, the sooner I'm gonna feel comfortable putting my sign on the building. So the storage requirement is just, there's gonna be times where I've got cars there that I'm in the process of selling, or buying for someone, or waiting for shipment somewhere, it will not be a car storage lot, the other thing too, is, you know, the more cars that are there, the more vehicles are at risk for vandalism or damage or theft.
Correct.
So, yeah, the storage is just about a car that needs to sit there during the normal course of business. Now, if you guys have driven by it all this past couple of weeks, yeah, when I first got there, people were parking down in the parking lot, staying there overnight, and so, I've put some vehicles there, again, to start establishing this presence, it feels like World War II, just with less guns, you know, I mean, it's a-
Here's, here's the thing, though, and I'll ask staff to chime in and correct me if I'm wrong, if we approve the CUP, the CUP runs with the land at that point, does it not? So someone else, so let's say you start your business, then you sell it, somebody else picks up the CUP, and if we have a provision there for storage, and we haven't put any parameters on that, then we could run into a problem with somebody who doesn't see, wouldn't necessarily come with the same level of integrity or concern that you do, so I think, I'm looking to, I want to avoid the, the one area while trying to really shoot for that other area that I described just a moment ago, and I'm not sure if I, if, you, you, no repairs gonna be conducted on the site.
Correct, we have a separate shop facility.
I couldn't find that in the conditions specifically, I may have missed it. Okay, thanks, so there's no repairs, and then, as far as storage goes, that I would like, and I'm, if you have some, an idea, but I'm gonna say a vehicle in a sellable or, I need some, another word, right, condition, right, that's there, and not, doesn't have the appearance of abandonment, so that's just one thing, I'm just gonna suggest that to the commissioners when we get to a possible motion on this. The other thing I'm going to ask you, the staff has given you the minimum requirements for the fencing, and I, going back to my opening discussion about how the area really needs some help, and I think really could turn into something special, I could, I could see we could have maybe start to get a high-end car audio shop, and we, we could get a few other kind of ancillary supporting businesses in that area that would also be desirable, and now we kind of start, you know, really improving an area that needs help, there's no question that it needs help. So I want to ask you, you know, what, what can you do beyond just the, you know, everything costs money, okay?
That's right.
Totally, totally freaking get that, so, what could, what could you do, or might be willing to do, to really enhance the curb appeal, and not just strike that minimum with a chain link fence with some lattice in it or something, if you follow what my question is?
If I understand, the requirement, actually, even the chain link fence with the lattice isn't enough, I have to put up a solid fence, and so, because I wasn't clear on that until just now tonight, I'm not fully prepared to answer your question.
Okay.
What I'm picturing in my mind is a fairly nice wood fence.
Okay.
Now, of course, that could possibly invite artistic expression-
Sure.
-from locals.
Harder to do graffiti perhaps on that than stone, than masonry, I don't know.
Maybe, yeah, to be honest, I've not considered what my options are for fencing, I like the hedge idea the best.
Yes.
I just have to find out if, if planting a hedge within 30 days is enough, because it may not be the four feet in time.
We could work with staff on that, I would think.
We spoke, we spoke before the meeting tonight, and, yeah, I, there would have to be some realistic expectation to allow that hedge row to, to grow, I'm not aware that you can, maybe you can buy fully mature-
Shrubbery!
Yeah.
Go buy a shrubbery, a little path.
I suppose anything's possible, but yeah, I think perhaps with some direction from the commission members, if they so choose, I, while I've got the mic, so to speak, the staff report does call out the required parking for the office building, we are fully aware that Mr. Burgess only intends to operate basically out of a desk, a chair, a phone, and a couple of pencils and pens and some paper, perhaps, but there is a potential that should this business get bigger, that he may want to have more staff there, the building would certainly accommodate that, there is room for another chair, another person. So what I'm getting is, getting at, and I think it's pretty clear in the staff report, that the code requires parking based on the floor area of the building, not necessarily the number of people that are inside the building. Therefore, with six improved stalls already on the site, that would leave one stall for, for inventory, so that, our conditions, well, the statement made, plus the condition or the regulations in our code for parking, would, would lend itself to allowance of only one vehicle to have stored there, but if, if the commission wishes to further clarify that, feel free, I'll stop talking.
Well, that was, that was a question that was popping up into my head, as far as the square footage, and how many parking spaces, and those parking spaces being dedicated to actual parking for, you know, visitors, clients, employees, versus a parking space that may be dedicated or used for, you know, the actual storage, long-term, short-term of the vehicle for sale, how does that work out?
Well, I guess, is the city going to daily drive by Mr. Burgess's business to determine whether he is parking in the dedicated stall for him, and how many cars he has stored there? I think it would, it would have to be an egregious violation where we would see the same car parked there, day after, a week after a week, then, maybe it, it's a little bit more, I mean, it becomes a storage yard, then we would perhaps investigate that aspect of it, does that, does that kind of help you?
Yeah, I mean, it clarifies the question, I'm not sure if it, if it answers it, but I understand what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
I had, I had, I'm sorry, I had one more follow-up question, and then I'm finished, I promise. So I wanted to understand a little bit more about the business model then, because as you said, you're not gonna be there all that often, you're gonna be off looking for other vehicles and whatnot, and by the way, that suggests to me that you will need a place to store while they're in interim, right, because you found a, you've either found a car that you know you can sell, or you've, or a buyer has asked you to find a car, and you found it, and you gotta have a place to put it until you can make the arrangement, so I would encourage some flexibility with that, but, so is the, is the business gonna be vacant a lot of the time? There'll be nobody there, that's one question, and then the second question, oh, damn it, I'm sorry, it'll have to come back, a second question. So the first question is, you know-
I have, I have a couple of part-time people that I work with, that do the detailing when I have, actually have a car, you know, for starters, every situation is different, some cars are ready to be sold before I even get to them, other cars come to me and need all kinds of work before they're ready for sale. Sometimes I'm never even seeing the car, like this Idaho situation, is, we broker deals, and I never even see the car in person.
So if a car needs a lot of work, do you send it out for that work?
Generally, yes.
So you're gonna send that out, right, okay.
So-
The approximate turnaround time, would you say, is there an average, or so?
I would say around two weeks.
Okay.
And, in the industry, that's slow, but that's because I'm not hammering out cars for sale every day.
Yeah.
You know, it's, some cars take a lot more, again, some need next to nothing, someone's selling their two-year-old car, and it doesn't even, just needs to be vacuumed, that's about all. So, the folks that do work for me will have access to the facility, so they'll be there to pick cars up, drop cars off, handle paperwork, whatever, but for the most part, it's all me, and then just subcontractors that I use for different things.
And then going back to the parking, this isn't like you're gonna, it's not like a retail business where people are coming in and looking around, so the, the parking is needed for a different, different purpose, I think that's, that was my other, just my other point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just dovetailing on the other commissioners, I think you mentioned Ducati and a 65, you know, obviously, if I was purchasing 65 from you, I probably would want it stored fairly secure before I was able to-
Absolutely.
...take possession of said vehicle.
Absolutely, and that's-
How do you propose to, I mean, cars are just sitting out there.
To be blunt, I'm not gonna leave a valuable car out there. We are, I've got a buyer coming out of Fresno next Monday to pick up a 1956 Volkswagen Beetle that we have. It's stored inside, it's in a lot garage, a car that valuable, I'm not even gonna leave it outside, you know, maybe a day or so while I'm waiting for the shippers to show up, but because of the nature of some of the clientele at the Upper Room, if all this goes well, and I get to move in, then I'll be installing cameras, and, you know, there's, security is an issue. If I am leaving cars over there overnight, they're gonna be the cars that, hey, nice car, not worth 50 grand, you know, that's, again, I have an entire shop facility up in Camino, most of the cars are there, to be honest, and, yeah, the retail model, again, technically, by DMV standards, I'm licensed as a retail dealer, but that's not my business model, you know, I'm more the boutique sales, so to speak, and if I happen to have a trade-in that I'm selling directly, it'll be parked on-site, and customers may show up, I'm by appointment only, I don't have listed hours, it's by appointment only, so, one person at a time, there's gonna be one car at a time will show up to view my inventory, which will be one or, the one or two cars I'm selling, that's all- which will be one or, the one or two cars I'm selling. That's all I have. So yeah, definitely not the retail model. No big banners out there. I won't be wearing goofy clothes and shooting TV commercials out there, so.
Cal Worthington and his dog Spot.
His dog Spot, that's right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
All right, thank you very much.
Do we have any other input from the public on this agenda item? If you would like, you can state your name for the record.
Amanda. I live in Camino. I think it's a great idea. I just would worry about the security, to be honest. And the Upper Room people are wonderful. I volunteer there. But they take that area as their pride and joy and it's more of their, their home. So you really have to win their hearts for them not to destroy it. So that's just like my advice to you. That's the one concern is, they, you might find someone sleeping on your property and you kinda have to be okay with it and just kinda look away. Yeah, that's, that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Have any discussion amongst ourselves? All right.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate my comments to my fellow commissioners, that I really think this is an opportunity to begin an upward improvement in the, that area, a particular area of Broadway. So that's one. And, and I hope the applicant could, can seize on that opportunity. I, I don't know that there's much in the way of conditioning that, that we could apply. I think, as I mentioned earlier, we wanna really protect ourselves against a subsequent property owner that would have the CUP and to make sure that the CUP protects us from a less professional orientation, as it, as it were. I'm not concerned about, I'm warning, actually, I'm concerned about the parking in that. I, I don't have an issue with the applicant storing vehicles temporarily in the various parking spaces. This is not a retail kinda space. And, and, correct me if I misunderstood, Andrew, but technically, he wouldn't be able to use the parking spaces for the storage of vehicles, right? I mean, that's not what they're for, but we could make an exception.
Well, the, the building requires five stalls be provided with the opening of a business within that building.
And that's irrespective of what activity is going on there?
Based on an office ratio under our parking regulations, it's one stall per 200 square feet, which mathematically, that comes out to 4.8 stalls, but you can't have an eighth of a stall, so we round up to five. And he would have one left over. If the commission wanted to, and perhaps, perhaps the director can, can agree or disagree with what I'm about to say, but the commission could theoretically, they could dictate the workings within, within the building to restrict occupancy to such that would allow for more display of vehicles outside, but restrict additional numbers of people within the building, if you know what I mean. Meaning, we would tie perhaps additional parking to, to restricting Mr. Burgess to be really the sole person to be on the property.
Yeah, and I'm not interested in going down that, that road at all. It just seems that, that while the, the code dictates a number of parking spaces, this is a business that frankly isn't gonna need parking spaces in the traditional, classic sense. And, and if there was some way to, to relax that requirement, if we had the, the discretion to relax that requirement a little bit, I think it would be appropriate. I wouldn't mind doing it.
If the commissioners would look at page eight, it's attachment one of your staff report, section five under parking, I direct your attention to A and B. Section A basically states that one parking space is allocated for the DMV required vehicle display area. So basically, the condition of approval is saying one space is allocated for the storage of a vehicle. Five B states that the parking of vehicles shall only occur within those areas designated for parking as shown on the approved site plan. So basically, what that condition is saying is that if, if Mr. Burgess is able to grow and have additional employees, so there's additional need for employee parking, maybe there's more vehicles in transition, maybe he needs two or three spaces for an interim period of time. That condition, in my mind, and you can certainly strengthen that condition, is basically stating that the parking needs shall occur only on the site. So there shouldn't be any issue of impacts to surrounding properties or street parking. So I think that's sort of, so the only relaxing component that I could see would be under five A, that last sentence. Maybe you can state it differently so that if he finds, if the applicant finds himself in a situation where maybe he has to park two vehicles for a period of time, maybe we allow that flexibility.
Let me just throw this out and I, and I won't, I won't beat this up in detail, I promise. If, 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 could condition B be worded such that parking may include those vehicles, may include temporary, the temporary parking of vehicles that are in transit between buyer and seller, or something along those lines, that would allow him to receive vehicles as part of deals, knowing they aren't gonna be there very long and then they're gonna get, they're gonna get sent out. Because that's really what the business is all about, if I understood correctly. It would be a temporary sort of thing. I wouldn't consider that storage. And it's recognizing the specific, the nuance of the business and it's keeping things within the, the spaces and it's temporary and it's not storage.
Yeah, unless Mr. Painter has a different opinion, I think staff would agree with that. Add, provide for the flexibility and maybe you just add an additional line that no parking shall occur off-site. That way, it's, it's self-regulating. There should be, should his business grow at some time in the future, and we all hope it does, he may outgrow the site and then he has to seek a new site because he needs more parking than the site can provide him.
I, I guess I would, I would add to that. This, the site's a half-acre in size. A portion, well, the western portion of the lot is currently undeveloped. The way this, the, the language is worded, the condition I drafted for your review and consideration, has to do with making sure that parking, whatever, however we wanna call it, for the parking of inventory, the parking of, for customers, the parking for Mr. Burgess when he shows up at his office, the intent of that language is to only allow parking for this use where approved parking has been designated on the site plan. That does not mean that the western half of the lot can be used for parking unless it's brought up to our standard for a parking area. That is certainly an option for him, should his business grow to that point. We have some situations around town where site plan reviews and conditional use permits did not specify where cars can park. And so we have people who are parking, I won't name and disclose locations, but they are not parking where it was intended for cars to be parked. And it's very difficult for us to regulate that. So that's one of the reasons why that language is in there. I was going to add, in addition to what Director Rivas mentioned, there could be a specification by the, by the City Planning Commission to limit the number of days that a stored vehicle could remain on the property. That would give the city a regulatory tool, should we see, and I'm, it's not his intent to do this, but this may alleviate any fears, should this use permit, which we talked about earlier, stays with the property for a future user of the site, that, you know, cars that are parked there and it becomes truly a storage yard, then perhaps a number of days could be conditioned to, to limit the display of that vehicle to a short time duration. I don't have a number in mind, but...
I do.
Okay. I hope that helps.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll close that. Do we have a motion on CUP 1702?
I move that we approve CP, CUP 17-2 as printed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for sake of discussion. Commissioner, does that mean you're not interested in any additional conditions or modifications?
You know, I, I, I think we also need to be careful that we don't tie a prospective business's hands so much that they'll go elsewhere. And, and that's where I'm coming from. So, yeah.
I'll offer, I'll offer two, two friendly amendments then. In condition five B, I would add, parking, and I have this written down so I can repeat it, parking may include the temporary placement of vehicles which are essentially, essentially in transit between, quote, buyer and seller, close quote. This placement shall not exceed seven days per year. And I would add, condition D, there shall be no off-site parking.
So let's move down the road two years. He moves out, somebody else moves in and they're, they're selling widgets. That really doesn't apply to them. I, I, I can't see adding that, your first, your first amendment.
The, to staff, this conditional use permit is for a particular business, is it not?
Yeah, it's related to auto sales in this case. We don't define in our code auto, auto brokerage, but based on the parameters that DMV imposes upon Mr. Burgess and brokerage folks like himself, that we consider it a auto sales use. And so, yeah, go ahead.
And my concern is that a similar auto sales business might come in afterwards and then they would have storage. And this, the amendment would prevent storage then at that point. They wouldn't be able to leave something there. They'd have to meet that condition.
I think that would be my understanding of, of your friendly amendment, yes.
So I'm not sure where we go with this. How friendly is that amendment? And is it acceptable at this point? Or do you not want to?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're, we appreciate your input, but at this point, we have to work the, the process, as my predecessor said, but thank you. So we have a motion on the table. Are you gonna withdraw your second?
I don't know if I can. Can I withdraw my second?
No.
I can't withdraw the second, but I will vote no on the motion.
We still have a, a motion on the table with, without...
Amendment, yeah.
Without amendment, that needs to be seconded.
I'm gonna second the original motion.
Okay. Can we take a roll call vote at this time?
Not to parse split hairs here, but technically, the motion on, the second.
It has been seconded. I seconded the motion.
Okay. You'd still like to call the question?
Yes.
Chair Roby?
Aye.
Vice Chair Saragosa?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Member Friend?
No.
Any motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, there is an appeal period for all actions taken by the Planning Commission. So it's 10 days, calendar days.
Thank you for reminding me. And more importantly, thank you for reminding the public. Okay. Item six, new business, 6.1, I believe we had that pulled from the agenda?
Yeah, basically, you table that to a future time when all five members are present. But staff does have some matters to discuss with you, if you, if you'd like to.
Item seven, matters from commissioners and staff.
I just have one, and it's ways into the future, but the first week of August, that meeting, I'll be in Hawaii having fun. So I will not be able to attend that first week in August.
I think, isn't that National Night Out anyway, so?
Oh, then I, then I will be fine then.
Okay.
And I'll be out. I will miss National Night Out then. Yes.
As, I'll start first, because I know Director Rivas has a few items. We will have a meeting, as you know, because you've got your packets tonight for the 16th. And we do anticipate some activity on the first meeting in June. And I'll turn it over to Director Rivas.
I have a few items just to discuss with the commission, just bring to your attention. I'll start with the Blair's Lane Bridge. Staff is happy to announce that the Blair's Lane Bridge project is almost complete, but it was complete enough where we've been able to open the bridge up to traffic, through traffic yesterday. Some additional work needs to be done, mainly in the creek, completing the riprap and a lot of the impertinence is underneath the bridge, which would be in the creek. So we're waiting until the water levels recede where they can actually get in the creek and complete the work. But the bridge is open. Party water line replacement projects. You may not be aware, but the reason why that project has taken so long is because there was a defect, an unfortunate defect, in the manufacturing of the water pipe, such that the bell portion where the other pipe would, would fit in was faulty and it leaked. So we had to replace all the pipe, unfortunately. There's no cost to the city, a lot of inconvenience, of course, to the traveler. The work has been done at night, but they're nearing completion. So this week, they were doing water line testing and deconf, disinfecting the water lines in Sacramento Street, Chamberlain and Gilmore. So we're hoping just another week or so will be, will complete that project. Let's see, the next item is the Wilbur Howe Parking Lot, or what we'd call a loading berth, that was considered by the City Council and it was approved. We have not heard anything from the applicant in regards to whether the applicant will comply with the conditions of approval that were imposed on that loading berth. They are continuing to use it without the paving that was required by council. So staff is consulting with members of staff to determine what our next, what our actions are gonna be. But that's where we stand with that. We have a proposed parklet. If you recall, that came before you, that will go to the City Council on May 9th for consideration. And then, let's see. Also, it's gonna be on the May 9th, City Council agenda is a resolution of intent to amend the sign ordinance. And that is in response to the United States Supreme Court Reed versus City of Gilbert, Arizona case, where the court ruled that non, the regulation of non-commercial speech has to be done in a manner of which you can't differentiate between different types of commercial speech. And so the city is going to examine its own sign ordinance and make sure that, that our ordinance isn't running afoul of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Another item that we'll be bringing back to the Planning Commission, hopefully sometime in June, we're hoping to bring that for you on June 6th. This had come before the commission some time ago, and this is in regards to some regulations regarding the front yard setback in residential zones and the fence height. Let's see, I wanna bring you up to speed on the Hampton Inn. Staff has been working with the Hampton Inn project proponents. It is moving forward. As you're probably aware, some of the delay to the construction... As you're probably aware, some of the delay to the construction of that hotel was, the project proponent is interested in, uh, pursuing modular construction. Uh, there was a hotel that was built in Folsom on East Bidwell that was built with these modular units that are constructed in Boise, Idaho, and they dramatically reduce the, um, construction time of a hotel project. And I've also learned that these modules are being used for apartment buildings and other types of uses as well, not just hotels. So the Hampton Inn went from a conventional construction type to modular. So the first floor will be, uh, typical, uh, construction with the, with the second, third and fourth floor being these modular, uh, units. It'll be trucked in from Boise. They'll be then staged at the, uh, Coronet Lumber Mill site and then brought in, uh, when they, uh, after they, they're issued a building permit and we're hoping that that's going to occur hopefully sometime later this spring or early summer. Uh, the last project update to you on is the Clay Street Bridge, uh, replacement project and the realignment of Clay Street with Cedar Ravine. Uh, that's slowly moving forward. We're trying to, uh, complete the public review draft of the environmental impact report and we're hoping to have that EIR released hopefully sometime later this month. And those are the items I wanted to, uh, update you on. I'm happy to answer any questions to any of these projects if you like. Thank you.
Any questions for staff on these matters? Okay, thank you. Any other items tonight? This meeting is adjourned.